Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Following Governor's recently-received statewide mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting either will recess or reconvene only virtually to be adjourned, or be adjourned. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. And please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and it streams on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Pasco app. And with that, this is probably one of the first times that I've seen the council chambers just full and I'm not that nervous. Take a deep breath. So bear with me. As many of you know, it's gonna be my last meeting officially running the meetings here in chambers in the city council. But we're looking forward to a wonderful future. And with that, can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Alvarado...
Present.
Maloney...
Present.
Milney...
Present.
Roach...
Present.
Serrano...
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas...
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. And tonight, we're gonna rise for the flag salute. But before we rise, I wanna introduce the young people that will be providing our Pledge of Allegiance and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. It's from Chera Vida Scout Troop 100, and they will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance in English and in Spanish. So with that, may we all rise, please.
Color guard attention. Audience, please rise. Color guard for march. Help. Post the colors. Repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Ahora en español. Yo prometo la arta a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América, y a la república que le presenta una nación bajo Dios, indivisible con la arta y esticio para todos. Two. Repeat with me the Scout oath. As my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country and to obey the Scout law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. Repeat with me the Scout law. A Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. Two. Color guard, we assemble. For march. For march. Color guard dismissed. Audience may be seated.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, is why America's great.
Amen.
If anybody needs some of these up here, they gave me two of them today. They were well-prepared today, so. So next, we'll, I'm gonna go over the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, then the items may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. The first item on the consent agenda is to approve the minutes of this Pasco City Council Special Workshop and Regular Meeting held on November 15, 2021, and the Special Meeting on Regular Workshop held on November 22, 2021, and the Special Meeting held on December 3, 2021. Next on the consent agenda is the Bills and Communications. That's to approve claims in the total amount of $7,538,180. Item C is Establish American Rescue Plan Act Fund and Budget Supplement, and that's to adopt ordinance number 4564, establishing a special revenue fund for the receipt and permitted use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, create PMC Chapter 3.143 ARPA fund, and further authorize publication by summary only, and also to adopt ordinance number 4565, amending the 2021-2022 biennial operation budget of the City of Pasco, Washington, by providing supplement thereto to provide additional appropriations in the city's general fund and American Rescue Plan Act fund for American Rescue Plan Act grant-related activities and further authorize publication by summary only. Item D is to approve Resolution Number 4127, approving an amendment to the agreement with Basin Disposal Inc. of Franklin County, a Washington state utility provider for the Utility Assistance Program with the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and to approve Resolution Number 4128, approving an amendment to the agreement with the Public Utility District Number 1 of Franklin County, a Washington state utility provider for the Utility Assistance Program with the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and also to approve Resolution Number 4129, approving Amendment Number 2 to the agreement with the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, a Washington state nonprofit corporation for the Business Support Program with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And item E of the consent agenda is to approve the cancellation of the December 13 and 27 council workshop meetings and December 20 council regular meeting. Item F is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Marilyn Baker to position number 3 with a term from August 2, 2021, to August 1, 2024, and the appointment of Darlene Sarte to position number 4 with a term from December 6, 2021, to August 1, 2024 on the Historic Preservation Commission. Item G, to confirm the mayor's appointment of Shane Arnut to position number 2 on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from December 6, 2021, to February 2 of 2023. And next on the consent agenda is to confirm the mayor, Martinez's, reappointment of Stephen Booth to represent the City of Pasco on the Franklin County Mosquito Control District Board of Trustees from January 1, 2022, through December 31 of 2023. And that is the list on the consent agenda. Mayor Protem. Would you like to take a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda as read.
Okay. So there's a, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda as read, and it's seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maloney...
Yes.
Milney...
Yes.
Roach...
Yes.
Serrano...
Yes.
Alvarado...
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barajas...
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda item, we have the Oath of Office for the council members. So today, we'd like to introduce Judge Stillwell to administer the oath of office for the recently re-elected council members. We have Blanche Barajas, Pete Serrano, Craig Maloney, and newly-elected council member Nikki Torres. So Judge Stillwell, would you like to come up, please? And councilmembers, you wanna go ahead and step down, please?
One of the privileges of getting older is getting more prompt and more wiser. Good evening. Just a couple of comments before we get started. I think a call to services is a safe call, and not many people respond to that call. Thank you, and we appreciate your answering that call, and we appreciate the service you provide to the City of Pasco. It's only four of us, so I can do this individually or in a group. I think it'll be easier if I just go ahead and do it as a group. So if each of you will, please raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Pete Serrano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Perform and discharge the duties...
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
For state your district and position number.
For district and position.
For the City of Pasco.
For the City of Pasco.
According to the law, to the best of my ability...
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So thank you, Judge Stillwell, and congratulations, councilmembers. For those of you who are joining us, are joining the City of Pasco for another term, and Nikki Torres for the new appointment. I'm sure you guys are gonna make us proud. So next, we'll go to, next on the agenda item, and that's the recognition of Mayor Martinez's services. And tonight, we have the one and only city manager, the almighty Dave Zabel.
So that was a little payback for those of you that may not have been there on Friday. So thank you, Mayor, for that great introduction. And good evening, Mayor, Council. I draw your attention to the screen. Just a little shot from your 2011, earliest meeting that we could find of you. So anyway, Councilmember-elect Torres was sworn in tonight because Mayor Martinez, Councilmember Martinez, is, to his term ends the end of this month. And many, many years of service to the city and to the community as a council member and prior to that as a school board member. But we do have a certificate of appreciation tonight. And Mayor, with your indulgence, and it's kinda weird for you to ask for public to say good things about you, so I will, you know, when the time comes. But I'd like to present you this plaque on behalf of the City of Pasco. And then I would invite, with your indulgence, invite councilmembers and members of the audience that care to speak to your service. So with that, Mayor, so this is a certificate of appreciation. The City of Pasco hereby wishes to acknowledge and express appreciation to Saul Martinez for 11 years of loyal, dedicated service as mayor, 2021, or excuse me, 2020 to 2021, and councilmember 2010 to 2019 with sincere gratitude for your commitment to Pasco dated this 6th day of December, 2021. And note the key to the city emblazoned on the plaque. That gets you pretty much into City Hall if you ever need to visit us. Repass.
Well, thank you very much for that. It's been an honor and a pleasure and a privilege to serve. I would highly advise that if any of you, deep down in your heart, have a passion to help people, this is one great avenue to do it. It doesn't even have to be here. It could be at whatever capacity you would like, you would like to share. But one of the greatest things that you could ever do is serve. And then it's just, there's just nothing more powerful than that of a volunteer and somebody who genuinely wants to help the community and the next generations just grow and make our community a better place to live. So with that, it doesn't look like anybody wants to say anything, Dave. So no, I do know that one of my sons was lost last Friday, and he wasn't able to make it, but he wanted to say some words tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Samson Martinez, son of Mayor Martinez. And it's been an unbelievable journey. Apparently, it's genetic. Wow, that came out of nowhere.
He doesn't usually do that.
These last couple of years have been incredible just in the sense that my dad has taught me a valuable lesson. If he can be mayor, anyone can be mayor. And it sounds funny, but what I mean by that is, my dad is just someone who cares about this community and cares so much that he was willing to give his time, his energy, and his commitment to the city because he loves it more than probably anyone else I know. And in the meantime, while being the perfect person to fill this position, I don't think anyone knew what Mayor Martinez signed up for when he took on this job. Within weeks, it became one of the most important roles in the city. And I think we can all agree that there was no better person to fill this role. There's no better person to fill this role than you. And you've been through a lot in these last couple of years, not just fulfilling your role as the mayor, but also dealing with a lot in life. You've had a lot to celebrate with the addition of another grandson, and you've had a lot to mourn with the loss of another grandson. And recently, your dad's health took him to the hospital, and you are somehow able to balance all of your work, all of your commitment to the city and all your commitment to the family so perfectly. And for that, I'll always admire you. I'm so thankful that even with your dedication and commitment that you needed to show to the city, you never stopped being dad. And you gave your 100% effort in every single thing you did. And I'll never be able to thank you enough for that. So to me, you're not just, you know, you are a great mayor, but obviously, I'm a little biased. But to me, you're the greatest mayor the city's ever had. And you're the greatest father anyone could ever ask for and the greatest leader I've ever seen. And I hope to be at least half the person you are because I know that if I'm that, then I'll be successful as well. So thank you for your commitment and for your leadership. And even though we give you a really bad time all the time, we really mean it in love because you have succeeded and just fulfilled every single obligation that we could have ever asked of you in this time. So thank you again, and we're all very proud of you. And we know that not being mayor anymore doesn't mean you're not gonna be a leader anymore. You'll still find ways to serve like you always do, and we'll always support you along the way. So thank you.
Thank you, Sam. You just made all those years worth it. Okay. So if there's no one else?
Mayor, if I could say a few words on behalf of staff?
Oh, sure. Go ahead. You got three minutes.
So I, it, hard to put down into words, you know, Mayor, because we've had a fascinating couple of years together while you've been mayor and before that too. But, you know, we don't often get the opportunity to recognize such service before it gets out the door. So I appreciate the opportunity tonight to be able to speak to this and to have all these people here honoring you. It's surely well-deserved. And as all of council knows, Mayor, yourself included, service to the community as a city council member is time-consuming, and it can be very daunting. There is rewards, and there's disappointments, and there's the joy of progress and the sting of setbacks. And I think all of us have felt a lot of that in particular the last couple of years. Mayor Martinez, Saul Martinez, joined the council at a time of incredible growth. And you've actually been on the wave of that. It never stopped once you got here. I mean, you kinda hit the peak of it, and it's been cresting ever since. It really hasn't subsided for more than a decade. You helped to authorize the expenditure of billions in service, billions of dollars in services and infrastructure to improve our community and the quality of life for all of those who call Pasco home. And that's, that's a lot of money over 10 years. But it's been money, I think, well-spent when you see the progress of the city, and you've certainly played a big part of that. You're also part of the council that fought the battles necessary to assure that all Pasco voters have the right to select their council representative by district. You were already on the council at that point in time and a very popular city council member, I'll add. And you were a leader in that fight with the legislature, and you were among the other council at that point in time, supported the plan that went forward that allowed that to happen. And as mayor, you led our community with grace and humility and positivity as we worked through to address the impacts of the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic on Pasco and on the region. And you truly were a leader in the region, not just for Pasco, but for the whole region. And, yeah, as were some of the other mayors as well in our region. But the four or five mayors out there did a lot, and you were a leader among leaders in that regard. So on behalf of Pasco staff, I wanna pass on our gratitude and admiration for how you represented Pasco through some of our most trying times in recent history for our community and for our nation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave. And before we go to recess, I guess my parting words would just be that I don't quite remember in all the years that I was on the council that I ever seen such an energetic spouse in all this. And I can't, I can't let this tonight go. I mean, who in the world would sit through two-hour meetings for fun and to just support somebody? But that's my wife, Nettie. She picked this outfit. And I get mad because I keep outgrowing them, you know? And you can see there, that's what happens when you get 10-plus years on the council. But, you know, I just couldn't thank her enough for being so supportive. And, you know, I do wanna clear one thing. You know, in Friday's event, I talked about traveling and doing all these things. I'm really not retiring. I'm too young to retire. And my decision just came with a lot of prayer, a lot of, a lot of thinking about it. And it was just time, you know? I had the privilege of having the most awesome support with family. And there's quite a bit of my family members here tonight, with friends, and, I mean, even my father and mother-in-law are here tonight. I've had the most wonderful support. And for all you leaders and for the families of these leaders up here, I gotta tell you, there's nothing more than knowing that you will have their back, no matter what, what decisions they make, that you will love them and support them no matter what. And that's just what I have felt throughout this process. And it started with Nettie. My parents, as my son indicated earlier, my dad's been having some health issues, but he's recovering. And I couldn't be more grateful, and I hope he's watching tonight because he's the reason that I'm here today as well. You know, and I love to say this. You know, my dad thought that someday that I would be the mayor of Misa. And I became the mayor of Pasco. So I guess I have to move back to Misa and go be a mayor there to fulfill his dream. But ladies and gentlemen, I've had the most wonderful support from my community, from my family. And it's been, it's been a wonderful journey. And I just wanna thank each and every one of you. And I see, we got your name written down here, Mr. Ray Aparicio. I called him out as the guy with no hair last Friday. So anyway, thank you so many of you for your support. And I'm so happy to see also the families of the people who just had their oath set up here. My counsel to you is just love them through thick and thin, through all the experiences, through all the decisions. When things get tough, they need you there more than ever. And I had that support during my whole time. And I've been leading, I've been leading, I had a position of leadership. I remember my sister Amanda over here. She... She was there when I was running against Pete Thostad, and I lost big time, you know, for the school board position. I didn't have a chance, but she was there supporting me. And that's, those things, I'll never forget. So with that, I had the most wonderful opportunity as well to work with some of the most amazing people and the previous councils that I, when I first came on to this wonderful, new, diverse council we have today. And I just couldn't be more proud and honored to be working with each and every one of you up here today. And I commend you for sacrificing your families and your life to make your communities a better place to live too. So congratulations to you, and I'm privileged to have, to have worked with you all. And, you know, it's not like it's over. I don't know where I'm going from here. But, you know, only God in my life will guide me with that. So with that, we'll go into about a 10-minute recess to have everybody celebrate their new positions. And thank you so much for attending tonight. And we'll adjourn this meeting. We'll reconvene. Why don't we just reconvene at 7:45? All right? Thank you. we'll reconvene. Why don't we just reconvene at seven, um, 7:45? All right? Thank you. Okay, so we are now gonna bring this meeting back to order. Thank you so much. It was very special. Uh, thank you for all the wonderful words and, uh, congratulations to everyone. So next on the, on the agenda, we have, let me get to the right place here. We have, um, an ordinance confirming the reappointment of Pasco municipal judge. Uh, so tonight, give me one second, make sure I'm in the right place here. So we are gonna present to you, oh, go ahead, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council again. So this is one of those rare, uh, intersections in a democracy, uh, where all three branches of government, the legislative, the judicial, and the executive intersect. And so for the Pasco municipal code, the city manager, the head of the executive branch, appoints the Pasco municipal court judge, head of the judicial branch. And then subject to confirmation by the city council, the entire legislative branch of the city government confirms. So it's, uh, it's kind of a special thing in a democracy. As to the, the judge, Judge Stillwell was first appointed and confirmed as Pasco municipal court judge effective January 18th, 2018, and extending through the end of this year, his first four-year term. Uh, during that time, the judge has successfully fulfilled the duties and obligations of municipal court judge, enhancing court services and effectively administering the municipal court department. If confirmed by the city council, the reappointment of Judge Stillwell to his second term as Pasco municipal court judge would be effective on January 1st, 2022, and extend through December 31st, 2025. As city manager, it is my honor to recommend for your, uh, confirmation, Judge Stillwell to a second term as Pasco municipal court judge.
So thank you, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel. And so just for the record, we're gonna make the motion first, correct? So with that, I will then attend the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4566, confirming the city manager's reappointment of Craig Stillwell as municipal court judge, affixing the accom, the com, compensation of the municipal court judge and judge pro tem and authorizing the city manager to execute the personal services agreement for Judge Stillwell's judicial services. Upon approval of the reappointment, Judge Stillwell will receive the oath of office of judge for 2020, 2020, 2022, I apologize, to 2025.
So with that, there's a, a motion to adopt ordinance number 4566, confirming the city manager's reemployment of Craig Stillwell as municipal court judge. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilman Melney. I'll second that.
So it has been seconded by Councilmember Melney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Uh, it passes unanimously. Thank you. And with that, I'm gonna ask Judge Stillwell to please come up so we can give the oath. So repeat after me. Aye, you take your name.
I, Craig Stillwell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I
Or affirm that I
Will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform the discharge, or perform the duties and discharge, the duties of the office.
Of the judge of the Municipal Court of the City of Pasco.
Of the judge of the Municipal Court of the City of Pasco.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I know Judge Stillwell has some family here, thank you so much for supporting, uh, your father, and appreciate you being here tonight, and we're honored to have your dad as a judge in our city of Pasco, so thank you very much. Next, we're gonna go to proclamations and acknowledgements, none listed, and next we go to the visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council, or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate, or for the posing of questions with the expectations of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes, and each by the mayor. These with lengthy me- those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. So with that, is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the council? Yes, sir. If you choose, you can state your name and address for the record.
Damian Davis, with the Franklin County Historical Society at three oh five North Fourth Avenue. First, I wanted to say, thank you so much. Uh, this last year, two years really, has been pretty challenging for nonprofit organizations such as myself, and through the generous support from the city, as well as other, uh, members and donors, uh, not only were we able to, um, satisfy the money that we needed to operate our museum, um, but we were also able to do a capital campaign to build a new building, to add to our downtown, so, um, I do want to say, thank you very, very much, um, both for the lodging tax dollars, as well as for ARPA considerations for nonprofit organizations. Um, it has been a major help, and I can tell you that those dollars, while they might seem small to the city, make up more than a third of our total budget for the year. So, thank you very much for that. Um, I also want to extend an opportunity for the entire board to come down to the museum. Uh, we're getting ready to have our open house this Saturday, it'll be from one o'clock till six o'clock, um, right over at three oh five North Fourth, just a couple blocks over. We're gonna be doing a general kind of roaming the museum from about one o'clock to two o'clock, and then we'll have, uh, one of our local schools is gonna have a choir group there singing and doing some leading of, uh, um, some songs with that, so I, I definitely would appreciate anybody who is able to attend, to attend, um, and I wanted to formally offer that invitation, um, tonight. Um, I also encourage, um, all the council members to swing through the museum, we reopen for our season generally around Saint Patrick's Day every year, and we'll run through the second to third week of December annually. Um, I've seen a couple of the council members in in various ways, um, I even got schooled by Congressman, or Councilman Milne here, uh, at the, uh, Winter Fest the other day, so that was really nice. But I, I, I honestly want you folks to know that, um, we take our job at the Franklin County Historical Society very seriously, and, um, it's through partnerships with this city, the county, and other cities in our county, um, that allow us to do our job, so I just wanted to come with that invitation and a thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you do, uh, over the years that I've been here, uh, just the work and the, the quality of work that's been done to not, to preserve our history, and you know, many times, i- it, it doesn't seem like it's that, that, that much attention is paid to it, but I gotta tell you that it is a more wonderful thing to look back and see where we were and where we are today, and it's folks like you that make it happen, and, uh, our history is so important to us, so thank you so much for the work that you do and your, and your board as well.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And if I, Mayor, I just wanna say that, uh, Mr. Davis here is a very good historian, he was telling me things about Pasco that I didn't know, and, uh, I'd recommend anybody that has World War Two questions to hit him up, he, uh, he's pretty knowledgeable about World War Two as well, so, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you, oh, we got one more.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, uh, for the opportunity, um, I just wanted to briefly just, uh, express my gratitude as well, um, to you, uh, Mayor Martinez, and also, um, Councilman Al- Alvarado, both of you are, are friends and leaders that I, that I admire, and, uh, I, I think, uh, it was just honored that we were able to have, uh, um, the scouts here this evening, and, uh, three of my own children, to be able to see some of the, some of my own role models and, and role models of theirs, um, Ruben is, is a, um, both of you have been great friends, and Ruben's a, a neighbor down the street, in fact, um, all the, the kids here, uh, refer to Ruben, uh, as, uh, T.O. Ruben, he's like an uncle to him, and, uh, we're certainly gonna, gonna miss having him just down the street, but, uh, know that both of you will continue to, continue your leadership and, uh, continue to do great things, um, both of, both of you have lived with, with grace and with humility, and, and with courage, you know, when, when faced with tough decisions, and, uh, again, admire both of you and, and know that your leadership, uh, will, will continue, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, with that, we'll move right along to next on the agenda, and that is verbal reports from council members, do we have anything you guys would like to share that happened throughout the week?
Councilmember Milne. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I did, uh, have the pleasure of helping out on a small level, uh, they had the movie on Saturday, the Pasco Parks and Rec, put on three movies, and, uh, wasn't a massive amount of people, but the food and the snacks were very good, I actually did really enjoy those, and I got to watch Elf, and so I really enjoyed that, but, uh, it's just good that we, as a Pasco, as a community, when we go out and we try to give people a chance to, you know, be in an environment with snacks and a movie, and not everybody could afford always to go to the movies, so it was a, it was a good time, and then I also got to attend the, uh, Pasco Chamber of Commerce today, and hear Michelle Whitney, and she was talking about the update with the Pasco Schools, and it was actually pretty positive, I was surprised by the numbers and, uh, how we are moving forward, and we're still getting kids, and, uh, it's, uh, it was a good meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Milne. Anybody else? Uh, I just, uh, Friday was a very busy day for me, um, and, uh, several of us attended the, uh, the Christmas tree lighting over here at Pioneer Park, and you know what, uh, what was the most exciting thing for me is that we started with just a tree, and now more trees are being lit up, and the hope is, is that in a year or a couple of years, that, uh, Pioneer Park will be lit up, and we will be having festivities when the, if, you know, controlling, uh, the situation we're in with the pandemic, and that we can have Pioneer Park just be a, a central focus point for, for much more than just Pasco, so I thank you to the Parks and Rec Department and all the people involved in, uh, in putting that together, and, uh, it is, it is wonderful that, uh, we work hard to give other people, or all people, all citizens of Pasco the opportunity to attend those events, and it was great, hot chocolate, and just the atmosphere that we had that night was wonderful, so thank you so much for all that. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two biennial financial update, Director Reacher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, to close off the night, more, uh, finance-related topics, but this is a routine in nature, uh, traditionally, the finance staff, um, usually provides you with a quarterly update, uh, about a month, month and a half after the, uh, the quarter has been closed out, however, with, uh, the budget presentations, um, and the time taken in that process, we've not had a chance to give council, um, a third quarter update, um, so we decided to just include the November data in this and, um, close out the year with this update. Um, so overall, um, you, we have made all of the adjustments needed, uh, to all of the funds, um, so there is really no areas for concern at this time, uh, and of course, we will be, um, reviewing and analyzing the data as we go through twenty twenty-two, and we'll be coming to council in a timely basis, uh, if we see any needs for adjustments.
Thank you, Director Reacher.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Director Reacher? Perfect, thank you so much, thank you for being so diligent, and, uh, and just the way you present, uh, these reports to us has been, has been, uh, very, very nice for us to, to read, and you've just been great, Reacher, thank you so much for all the work you've done.
Thank you, the pleasure is all mine.
I won't say nice, oh, I guess Ward is here, I, I'll say something nice about you later, everybody else is gone. All right, so next we'll go to, uh, on the agenda, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto, and tonight, we have a public meeting and resolution, accepting a notice of intent for Port of Pasco Ryman Industrial Center, uh, annexation, and tonight, since Rick is not here, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel, would you like to, do you have a, a report or what, get us up to speed on this?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council, so this, this has to do with, um, the Port's Ryman Center and an annexation petition, uh, to the city of Pasco, uh, that would include bonded indebtedness, I, I, I do know we have, uh, the Planning Manager, uh, Jacob Gonzalez, uh, online, and, uh, I think he is prepared to give the staff report on it.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council, this item is with regards to the proposed annexation of approximately three hundred acres, located between U.S. Highway three ninety-five and the BNSF Railroad Main Line, the site's about one half mile north of the Port of Pasco's processing center. The purpose of this annexation supports the Port of Pasco's Ryman Industrial Center development, the site is located within the Pasco urban growth area, and is shown on exhibit via the staff report, and is on the screen right now. The recommended action request of council tonight will accept the annexation, establishing the annexation boundaries and assigns the assumption of bonded indebtedness. Following the, uh, council review of the proposed annexation and a passage of the resolution, staff, uh, will prepare the annexation petition, uh, following the certification from the Franklin County Assessor's Office, a date will be set for a public hearing for council to formally consider the annexation. So, uh, that, that's the, uh, quick presentation for this meeting, and, uh, happy to answer any questions from council, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, so with that, Mr. Ferguson, is there anything here that we have to, that you would like to?
Yeah, so this is one of these weird, uh, anomalies in the law, that basically we have to, uh, for any annexation, we have to, uh, hold a meeting with the proponents, uh, in public, so this is a meeting, uh, for, uh, the council, the legislative body, to, uh, meet with the, uh, the folks that are proposing the, uh, the annexation, obviously, uh, uh, if they would like to speak at this point, they could, and, and they would do that in public, but it's not a public hearing, uh, in our typical sense, it's a, it's a meeting, uh, with the proponents, uh, with the council, uh, in public, so, uh, if there's anyone, uh, who's one of the proponents that would like to, uh, uh, speak at this time, that'd probably be the time to do it.
Okay, so I'll give this opportunity, um, i- am I required to, to, um, to, to do a three call?
No, not at all.
So, uh, we'll give this opportunity for anybody in public that would like to share or speak on this topic? Anybody from council? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, I move to approve Resolution number four, one, three, zero, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Ryman Industrial Center annexation, providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed, whether simultaneous zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required.
So there's a, uh, motion on the floor, a resolution number four, one, three, zero, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Ryman Industrial Center annexation, do I hear a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Councilmember Alvarado. So with that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. It passes unanimously, thank you. Next, we'll go to ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, and we have, um, a resolution, ordinance, Pasco Public Facilities District Grant, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel.
Thank you again, Mayor, so essentially, um, Pasco Facilities District is a separate public entity from the city, although obviously there's a relation there, a creation of the city as a municipality, um, they have an oper- they operate, and they are largely responsible for their own finances, uh, they find themselves because of, um, cash flow issues, uh, with a current deficit of about sixty thousand dollars. There is a projected deficit into next year, but there's also, uh, a major ballot issue, so we, we, it's only a projection at this point, it really depends on what happens with the ballot, so the proposal is, uh, for the city, through its general fund, to allocate sixty thousand dollars as a grant to the Pasco Public Facilities District, which is allowable, uh, from one government to another, and, uh, we would amend the, uh, biennial budget to reflect that grant if council were so inclined to do so. Recommendation would be to, for council to approve the grant.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel, so therefore there's two motions, uh, one is to approve the resolution, and the other one is to adopt the ordinance, so, does anybody have any questions or any comments for this topic, Councilmember Serrano?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Zabel, is that sixty thousand dollar delta due to incurred costs for, um, the consultants, or do we know where, where exactly that number's coming from? Look, I would say largely due to the consultant, yeah, just, just, uh, the scope of the plan, uh, from what was originally accomplished, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, work they did last year, uh, in, in the, uh, board's due diligence to, to determine a, a path forward. So do we anticipate that their twenty-two budget, uh, reflects as much reality as possible? With, with incurring this, or granting the sixty thousand dollars and anything else they've got projected for twenty-two, do we anticipate that we will be covered, or? There, there is additional work that will need to be done next year, but you very mo- well may have a, an approved revenue source for that, uh, based on a vote of the people. Okay. And if there's not an approved revenue source, then obviously that's gonna change the work plan significantly. Right, right, okay, I just kinda wanna ferret that out as much as possible, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. If there's nobody else who wanna entertain a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number four, one, three, one, approving a grant to the Pasco Public Facilities District for sixty thousand dollars for continued operations.
So there's a motion to approve Resolution number four, one, three, one, do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilmember Serrano, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. It passes unanimously. Next motion?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four, five, six, seven, amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget of the city of Pasco, by providing supplement thereto, to provide operational support to Pasco Public Facilities District from its general fund.
So there's a motion to adopt ordinance number four, five, six, seven, do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Roach, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, uh, oppose, say nay. It passes unanimously, thank you. Next, we'll go to, uh, on the agenda is a resolution, interfund loan extension, Director Reacher, would you like to kick us off with that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is, uh, a loan extension that the council has seen a couple of times, um, over the last two years, uh, and it is essentially, uh, a loan from general fund to our Marina Fund, and as council is aware, uh, we've had some of, uh, our decks damaged, um, in the Marina over, um, the, the weather in the last three to four years, and, uh, we have been working diligently with our insurance company to, uh, ensure that all of the funds are reimbursed, however, there were still some work that needed to happen, uh, in the Marina to ensure that we, uh, we were still complying with all of the rules and regulations. Um, at this time, uh, we're s- there's been a lot of reimbursement that has already happened, but there's still, it's a small fund, so its cash flow issue is always precarious, and so when you're doing, um, this level of work, uh, which the fund essentially was never designed for, um, it creates some cash flow issues, so we are requesting for an extension, um, of this loan, um, that was, uh, initially issued in two thousand nineteen, um, and we want to take a look at, look at it in twenty twenty-two, uh, get more, um, answers from the insurance company and finalize, uh, what, um, what we should, uh, do with the work that is being done in Marina Fund, and how it should be funded, if the insurance company will not cover it. if the insurance company will not cover it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, would you like to entertain a motion?
Yes Mayor, um I move to approve Resolution number four one three two, amending an interfund loan from the general fund to the Marina Fund authorized by Resolution number three nine two two.
So there's the motion to approve Resolution number four one three two. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The passage is unanimous. Thank you. We go to unfinished business and unlisted. So we do have a couple of new business items that we need to discuss. And the first one is a Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce American Rescue Plan Act Fund request. Director Riecher?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Uh this is a request from the Hispanic, uh Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce uh for up to fifty thousand dollars of uh the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um they have been running uh pop-up clinics, over seventy pop-up clinics in the community uh and have administered over twenty eight, uh twenty-eight hundred uh COVID-nineteen vaccination doses. And uh they would like to keep this action going uh into uh the rest of twenty twenty-one as well as twenty twenty-two and are requesting uh some reimbursement uh for uh for the cost that is related to operating these pop-up clinics. We also have um the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce uh President Martine Valdez online if um if you have any questions regarding this request as well.
Okay. Uh any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Sharano?
I've already spoken. Councilwoman Maloney, go ahead. I'll ask my question.
Oh, alright, thank you. Um so I, I heard Martine's on the line. Um I guess my, my question is, uh Martine, about how many um how many people have you been getting vaccinated over the last couple of weekends? I know you have a pop-up clinic at Supermax Saturdays and Sundays. About how many did you do this last weekend or, or recent weekends?
Hello, um thank you City Council for um uh having me here and congratulations to everybody and congratulations. Thank you for all your work, Mayor Martinez. Uh so thank you for that question. So yes, we've been uh working really, really hard to try to get um uh individuals in the Tri-City's community vaccinated and with a special focus on Pasco. So by now we've actually helped vaccinate over three thousand individuals. And this weekend alone, we had three pop-up clinics in the, in Pasco and we vaccinated two hundred and ninety-three individuals. Um and we're continuing to do that. What our focus is to be where, to make it accessible to individuals who cannot get to vaccine clinics during the week. People who work a lot, people who don't have sick days and vacation days to ke- kickoff. Um we are also at Supermax every single weekend, so we are consistent. We are convenient, convenient. People do not have to make um, it's free. They don't have to make any appointments and, and you know, they just are already at the grocery store. So we, we're trying to make it as easy as possible because you know that many individuals, they're not opposed to it. They just want to make it easier. Also, when we can, we provide fifty dollar gift cards as an incentive and as a thank you to those that are not already vaccinated. And we know that many low-income individuals really appreciate it. And we also have community health workers. So this is a partnership primarily between the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and Heritage University. And we have bilingual, trained, community health workers to answer any questions or concerns.
Great. I appreciate that, that response. Um I've had the opportunity to, you know, I, I live right next to Supermax, so we're, we're down in that area a lot. And there has been extended lines and um a lot of attention on this. So this is a well, a, you know, population again that we know that is, can struggle to make the appointments um to get the vaccinations. So again, this is about, you know, if we're talking about the, the freedom for people to choose, this makes it the easiest way for them to choose to get a vaccine if that's what they see fit. So thank you for your, your hard work today and um I intend to support this effort to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Sharano?
I appreciate that because that was the question I was gonna ask is if we were gonna see declining ROI here. Um and obviously if you're you were at twenty-eight hundred before the report and we've vaccinated three hundred this week and let's get the only concern I have about that comment on the Supermax and in reading, you know, the fifty dollar gift cards, is there risk, Director Sigdel, of audit of these gratuities coming back to bite the city?
Um we, eh, yes, there's always risk with anything that is liquid. Uh one of the ways to uh mitigate that risk would be um to, for us to ask uh the Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to have really good and strong um accounting system for those gift cards. Um and that is one of the reasons why we uh requested that we go the reimbursement route for more of the staff costs as well. Um so that there's uh less exposure to that risk itself of the gift cards.
So does auditing track more so the staffing hour and costs, those harder costs?
That would be yes.
Yeah, I think that's one of my concerns. I, I wouldn't want to get caught up for, you know, a minor amount of, you know, ten thousand dollars in gift cards. Um the other question I do have is, is this open to everyone? The children through adults?
Yes, so we, we've been, actually it's, it's always been open to everyone. We started vaccinating uh children from five to eleven. Um I think it was three weekends ago and we've had a lot of folks bring their children. You know, our um Ben Franklin Health District publics, publicizes where vaccine clinics are on their website and we are there. And so we have a lot of parents bring their children. Particularly on Saturdays, you know, they want to make sure that in case, um you know, their, the child's arm hurts, et cetera, they have a day to rea- uh to recover on Sunday. So we have a lot of children. Uh this summer at the late, in August, we have a lot, we had a lot of uh individuals, a lot of parents bringing their kids twelve to seventeen, right before school started. So yeah, so this is open to everybody. We are now administering all three vaccines and we're also doing uh boosters.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you Councilwoman Sharano. Councilwoman Roach?
Thank you Mayor. Uh Martine, this is Councilmember Roach. And I just wanted to say I had the privilege of coming down to Supermax and getting my booster there. And as somebody who has two jobs and a mom, I make sure that everybody else gets their flu shot and gets in for their annual physical and I just don't prioritize making that time for myself. So that's where I got my shot and it made it really accessible because I just could go grocery shopping and then get in line. Um and I had a really positive experience and so um I did ask about the fifty dollar gift card because hey, you know, who, I can use fifty bucks, right? Um but they were really clear that it's because I was getting a booster, I did not qualify for the um, the gift card. So there seemed like there were some controls there on, on that with staff making sure and verifying uh who is a first-time vaccinated person versus a booster and you know, uh heated, uh what are those space, outdoor space heaters? Um in a tent so that people can have a warm place to sit because it is getting cold outside. So I appreciate all, all of that. Um and that there was a language accessibility piece of it too. So thank you for the work that you're doing in the community. Thank you for the, uh, to the Hispanic Chamber for their work.
Thank you.
Thank you Councilwoman Roach. And yes, Mr. Valdez, I also want to extend my appreciation for all the work that's being done there. So with that, if there's no other questions or comments, will you entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh wait, there is no motion. Never mind, never mind. Sorry about that. I was getting excited there. Alright.
We, we were asking for direction from council on how you would like to move forward with this request and we can work with uh Tri-City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to make sure we have the program guidelines and, and are able to create a contract um and all of those things that take some time um as, as you're aware of.
Alright, thank you. So do you have the direction you need or?
I, I believe I did, yes.
I mean, we got, yeah, we, I think you, we have enough people in here that is uh in a, approving of this. And so, yeah, we want to continue to, to give support. Yeah, we're gonna. Okay, I, I'll go ahead and allow, I mean, it can get me in trouble anyway, so. So just, if you would just uh, you know, obviously keep it to three minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Portugal.
Thank you very much. As the board chair, just want to be very, very brief. Um so one thing that I was thinking is about the type of, of folks that come and get these vaccinations. Um think about um the farm workers that work really long hours and think about that sometimes uh places where they provide this service is really not um available at those hours. So I was just thinking and I think uh, uh, eh, uh Councilwoman uh, uh Roach uh eh said it really well. I just wanted to add the uh farm worker um needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Portugal, and I appreciate that. Alright, if there's no further comments or questions, then we can proceed. Director Riecher with that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next we uh, next new business item is disposition of ad hoc inclusion, diversity and e- uh equity commission. City Manager Dave Zabel?
Thank you Mayor and uh good evening again Mayor and Council. This um has to do with the uh in- uh inclusivity, diversity and equity commission, IDEC commission. And as council recalls, this is a limited term com- commission first established back in February of eighteen. Uh yeah, and um it's been kind of moving along uh since that point. A lot of ups and downs uh in that commission. It's uh, it was a new concept, so there wasn't a, wasn't necessarily a pattern to follow when it came together. So they had to, with the charter the council gave them, they uh were able to be formed about August of that year and start their work in earnest. And uh there was a, it was a fairly short timeframe on the term of the commission. It was initially, I think, two years uh with eight months into the term before they had their first meeting. Uh made it difficult for them to, to uh complete their work uh during that period of time. They did however, um accomplish some uh significant things. Uh one of those being some very good foundational work of the commission um in terms of understanding how the city um functioned as well as some of the other governments in the region, Pasco School District and um Downtown Development Authority, Tri-City Diversity Council. There's a number of agencies that they interacted with at that time, just kind of learn the role and the lay of the land. Uh another piece they did, which was a very, I think, first successful, or successful first uh uh effort by the group was a Community Outreach and Engagement Forum, which they conducted back in September of twenty nineteen uh with some plans to really make that more of a regular occurrence. Uh unfortunately, that has not panned out um primarily due to COVID. Uh we got through that first year and we go into twenty twenty. Uh there was a couple of commission vacancies, three as a matter of fact. Uh that took some time to um address as well as uh the state mand- mandated limitation of public meetings uh to routine and necessary. So it was was not only could they not meet in person, they, they really couldn't meet because it wasn't a committee that was routine and necessary. And as the COVID uh restrictions started to ease over time, uh they were able to start meeting in August of twenty twenty. So they went a long time without uh the ability to even have a meeting. Uh so we had three new uh commissioners at that point in time. I think they were probably commissioners for six, seven months before they had the opportunity to meet with uh the other fellow commissioners. Even at that point and through today, all those meetings have been virtual. Uh they did uh conduct a virtual uh community meeting uh this last uh week that had a number of attendees from around the community uh participate. I think uh the committee did a very good job of taking input and, and uh trying to make sure, confirm what they, information that they were gathering. But there, you know, the fact, the fact is, is that the council's extended the commission a couple of different times now. Uh this last extension ends on December of twenty twenty, end of, end of this month, uh end of this year. So we have uh some options I think the council needs to consider. I, I don't know that we necessarily need direction tonight. The plan was be to have it come back on the January tenth meeting. At that meeting also, the commission wants to give you an update on uh their most recent uh uh public outreach effort. But some of the options uh that council consider, we, we tried to lay them out for you. There's essentially five different options. One would be to continue on as a status quo committee uh with their original charter and the work plan that council approved uh several months ago now. Um another option would be to codify IDEC as a standing advisory committee of the city council. Uh it's interesting, you start to talk a little bit about the mechanics of what happened, so uh status quo, an advantage of that is you, you already have a mission, you already have a work plan, you got a charter, everything else that's set up for a kind of a sunrise sunset uh body of work. If it's gonna be a standing commission, uh council may want to relook at what the charter is and think about what, what kind of purpose would you want a committee like this to, to serve uh over the long term on a kind of annual revolving year after year basis? Uh it's also probably gonna attract some different kinds of candidates. There's people that may be willing to serve a two-year term or a, another year term. And there's people that may shy away from a four-year term. And there's also people that they don't want to serve a one or two-year term. If I'm gonna get appointed to something, I'm gonna put a little time into it and serve a four-year term. So you, you kind of get a bit of a different pool of candidates um uh in that option than you would in option one. Uh another option, uh we didn't at the time have the Arts and Culture Commission. Uh one option would be to incorporate uh some of what the IDEC uh mission uh in terms of public outreach and, and um that kind of unity piece uh across the city, utilizing arts and culture as a, as kind of the glue that, you know, would bring it together. So that's, that's a possibility. You could expand that commission uh to allow for some non-artists to be on it. See, you'd have a combination of artists and uh, uh art appreciation folks as well as uh folks that see maybe the, have the more I guess, non-artist uh perspective on how art impacts them as a, as a user or a listener or whatever kind of art uh might be the case. And another option you could pa- so, right, and I did skip a little part uh so we're gonna, as, as part of the recommendations uh earlier this year from the IDEC Commission, uh council authorized a strategic equity po- plan. And so that's included in the twenty twenty-two budget, mid-budget uh adjustment. So one option might be to pause the ad hoc commission until completion of the equity plan and kind of look at what the recommendations of that equity plan are for the purpose of a standing commission, whether that's continues to be ad hoc or, you know, we could have them look at that piece and how that could best serve the the council and the community. Um look at what other communities are doing along this line. Uh when we first started looking at this back in twenty eighteen, most of those kind of commissions had a very limited purpose in some of the communities that have had a longstanding committee uh like that. And frankly, some of them didn't seem to add a lot of value. They were like maybe around one event, for instance. There's been a lot of uh progress since then in communities seeing the value in this type of work. And I, I, I think today a look at that's probably gonna uh render um a lot more options and a lot more thoughts than what we, what we saw a few years ago. And uh then the final option would be to just not, rather than pause, disband it and await the, so that's four and five are essentially the same. One would say pause it, the other would say disband it and wait the outcome of the, of the strategic equity plan. So tho- those are just really some options. There's a lot of uh source materials in there for council uh to consider. There's of course the original charter, there's the extensions, there's the work plans. Uh a couple, a couple of things I, I did talk a little bit about um uh commissioners and, and who might be attracted or, you know, some may, some folks may be attracted to a short, shorter term and some do a longer term. We do have t- two vacant, one vacancy right now, one vacancy pending at the end of the month. Uh and then we do have a couple of uh commissioners that have not been very active the last few months. You know, you'll note the, the agenda report uh noted, I think we've, we've had a difficulty uh rounding up a quorum for most of the year. So I just throw that out there as some things for council to think of. We anticipate we'll bring this back on the tenth. Uh I can tell you that the, the commissioners uh which was a quorum last week are, are all very committed. Those four are very committed to, to the work of the commission. So you have some good people working on behalf- She has some good people working on behalf of you.
All right. Councilwoman Roach.
I guess my feedback on terms would be just thinking about this, you know, two-year terms. And then with the option to recommit to staying on, for those that have that desire to continue on, while not overburdening somebody with the the weight of you must stay for four years. So that's just my thought on the terms, what I what I got.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think from from my perspective, you know, when we when we, the majority of us got on Council, we made a commitment to really devote some of our resource, I guess, towards this. And we we spent some time, you know, in, you know, with a small committee, talking about what this could be and knowing that this work was important, then we, very shortly after we had a pandemic and, you know, kind of derailed us. So I think to to give it fairness, I think it'd be good to, at the very least, allow the status quo to to have them do a restart and see, you know, under more normal circumstances, be able to meet. But I very much appreciate that this was a, I guess, something that this Council created and the staff was willing to kind of move move forward with this work that could be very messy, could be very confusing sometimes, but it certainly is very important. And so I I guess as someone who's who was part of 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 trying to talk about this when we started it, I would love to see this continue.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Any other comments? Oh, Councilwoman Maloney, yes, sorry.
I think I think I've got a excuse here, just so you can't see, I think I can point right at you. Yeah, I guess, Mr. Zabel, does does has this been brought in for the IDEC? Do they have a recommendation on how they could, what their recommended path forward would be? I'd be interested in understanding that. Is that something you have?
We we have had some discussion with them, but we did we did not have all the all five options scoped out. I mean, I I would tell you that the ones that are participating wish to continue.
Appreciate that. I guess if when I'm looking through these options, I I definitely do not like item three. If we're going to keep the IDEC going, I would not like to dilute the Arts and Culture Commission. They've been, I've gone to one or two other meetings, they're they're working hard and getting a lot of stuff done and are very, very task-driven and very, 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 they're they're moving forward very well, I think. And so I would I would hate to derail any of their energy and current actions. Not that not that the group of people who is on our IDEC would be, you know, intentionally dilutive of that. Just simply expanding that mission, I think, seems to be counter to what we're what would make make sense here. I'm I'm interested in somewhere between one and two of either, you know, maintaining it as is or potentially treating it as a standing advisory commission. If we did have a standing advisory commission, I I think it would be important to tie that in a lot with some of our with the planning that was going on with the strategic equity plan and others. I was able to attend the meeting that the IDEC helped hosted the other day. And just, you know, as a listening member, I don't think most of the new ones on intentionally. And, you know, I I I think it it was great that they were holding it, it was great that they're going to continue to outreach, but this pandemic is really limiting our ability to reach into the people who aren't really comfortable coming into this chamber to speak with us anyways. We heard a lot of voices from people who already, you know, they have no problem sending me an email or showing up to one of our meetings and such. So I I I think we need to see about an opportunity for them to, with a re-energized group, really hit the ground running in a hopefully more personal and direct way. I think a great example of of where some of our work is continues to be for community outreach as a city is that feedback we're getting from our downtown businesses. That's been such a difficult struggle for us to reach in the past. And with our with with Mike Gonzalez on board, now we're hearing from people who who have truly felt like the city hated them. I mean, I've heard some pretty, pretty, pretty negative things about the city from from those members. And us having people that are inviting folks to come in and say, no, you're part of our fold too, I think is is really benefiting the city in the way we're planning and building our community. So I look, so I I think that it's worthwhile to keep the IDEC on on board to help help guide the strategic equity plan and and take us take a stronger stance in terms of especially maybe more focused on where we can do better outreach and get more input from the community at large. So I guess that's that's my feedback. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Schmoll.
I appreciate that. I actually think that makes the case for number four, which is the place of pause on the commission. Because right now, we're working on a structure we developed three years ago with a specific scope three years ago. And I think it's changed, not only due to the pandemic, but if we're going to bring on a professional to bring a plan about, we want to ensure that that individual works somewhat independently to do the things that, quite frankly, we had charged IDEC to do, to review our policies and our practices, to review our code, to try to point our weaknesses and our flaws of the city out. Yeah, I don't really recall getting that meet over the past three and a half years. And I understand the pandemic's been difficult to navigate through. But quite frankly, I I, in my opinion, they missed the mark to a great deal. And and then, I'll be honest, I was very disappointed when we got this statement of we need to hire someone to do this. We asked our citizens to apply for a board to tell us what was wrong with our city. And I felt like we just, we never got that. We never got that developed, tell us where our practices and procedures are short-falling. Tell us where we could improve. And maybe I missed something along the lines. And so I think, in my opinion, if we're going to hire a professional, let's culminate that data like we're doing on every other plan, wait till the plan's prepared and then adopt something in response to the data gets data that's aggregated. And for that reason, I think we should pause at least ad hoc commission until the plan's completed. We've done this with every other plan. Wait, see what it does. It's taken, I mean, we've taken, it's taken us forever to get a downtown ordinance adopted because we're afraid to do something because of the plan. So let's wait and see what a professional does and then decide what that committee needs to look like based on the input from the individual paying. So I prefer number four.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmoll. Oh, Councilwoman Roach.
May I just say something as as the, I guess, for a short term, the the one with the least tenure, and you all were here when you started the IDEC. And so I think I saw it with a different lens, from a different vantage point. And, you know, not trying to assign any responsibility because I don't know where it lies, but it seems like that commission was created. And then proper dedication of resources or staffing weren't given to get it to where it needed to get off the ground and get going. You know, and I don't know what the answer to that question is, why, you know, for eight months they didn't meet. Obviously pandemic, and it seems like the other issue that's been addressed is vacancies. And so I guess, thinking about it in terms of looking at the Arts Commission, getting going, having a dedicated staff member who's advising that that group and maybe having the right people, that synergy happened and they're off to a good start. And so I don't know if the circumstances around IDEC have just caused it to kind of flounder, but it would be a disappointment to those four core individuals who are getting, you know, their feet on the ground and getting going on some type of energy and then to say, we're going to pause this on you and we don't really know what we want to do with with your commission. So I see the I see the necessity in in having an IDEC in general for our community. And I hear it in what Councilmember Maloney is talking about in terms of, you know, how we can incorporate and include business members from the downtown. So I would, you know, I I think, you know, number two is my number one option. And then maybe number one, and I guess I'd like to hear from the the IDEC members themselves and their their input on this. So that's for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
So just to add to what you were saying regarding the terms, my suggestion would be offer maybe terms of one year and or two years for individuals just to in hopes to maintain some of the participants, those that wish to stay there longer, maybe two-year terms was an option for them. But I would also opt for option two. I wouldn't want to pause and definitely wouldn't want to disband the commission. I do also agree that they should take more part into considering or working along with the downtown businesses and create some type of agreement to to hear each other out and and via that communication, fill in those blanks as far as participation, as far as plans for the future. I feel there's there's still a need for the group to continue. And again, just offering the one or two-year terms, that's my input.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brahas and Councilmember Maloney.
Since everybody's chiming in, I'll chime in as well. I would like, again, I'd like to hear what they have to say when, I think you said January tenth is when they would be coming.
Yes, January tenth.
I'd like to hear what they have to say and what they feel they've accomplished. And then I would agree with Mayor Protem Brahas that maybe shorter term, I know it's difficult in a lot of other basically commit or not commissions, but different for different avenues of serving the city that you have a hard time of keeping people there. So I would agree with that, that maybe one to two years would probably be the most that you could have on a commission like this, so. But I'd really like to hear what they have to say and what they plan to accomplish and what their timeline for accomplishing these goals would be. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Did you have some more to?
I would I would just want to correct the perception that the commission hasn't been supported because it actually has had very good support. Matter of fact, the same staff liaison that liaises with the Arts and Culture Commission supports this commission. I attend most of their meetings, which that's the only council advisory committee that I attend on a regular basis, is this is this one. And they have a paid facilitator to help them do their work. So they they have a lot of support, it's not from lack of support.
Mr. Zabel, if I if I may, just a quick question on that. Was that the case from early on or is that something that was added later on to the process? Because I think the question confusion, and I I don't remember how this, what what level of support, so I'm not trying to make a compliment or the other, but is was it did it start off with that level of support or is that something that's been introduced down the line a little bit from when they got going?
It, from a staff perspective, there was a staff member assigned to them, Michael Morales, who this was a passion project for him. And and after that, it went to Angela Pashon. My my involvement's probably only really been over the last year and a half or so, at at the level it's been, as well as the as well as the paid facilitator. I'll I'll note that the first eight-month increment, it took that long to kind of get everything written up and get everything kind of organized, go through the Council selection process of the so that so that February to October back in twenty eighteen was just a function of starting up a brand-new commission. The last gap was having to do with regular and routine where we weren't, the commission was not allowed to meet. No, none of the commissions, none of our advisory committee meetings, or none of our advisory committees were were meeting during that time, as Council recall. We, matter of fact, our own agendas were pretty limited is what we could have on them at the time, as you recall. So that that's which was no fault of the commissions.
I appreciate that clarity, City Manager Zabel, on that. Those those first eight months is what I was questioning in terms of what happened from its approval from Council to when it actually met for the first time in terms of resources or or getting going. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Well, does that give enough leeway for?
Yeah, that that does, thank you. I appreciate the insights from Council tonight. And we'll be here to talk about it again on the tenth, along with IDEC, to give you their report in their most recent quarterly meeting, as well as their perspective on on the issues we discussed tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. And thank you, Council, for your discussion tonight. Next, we'll go to miscellaneous discussion. City, yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Well, as I made some public news earlier today, staff was gracious to help me with a helping me put together a press release that I drafted and just very thankful for staff to just kind of support me with that. And well, I have announced that I will be transitioning at the end of this year to Walawala, as I've taken a a new position there, and my my wife has been commuting for a number of years there. And so I'm very thankful for her support over the years. So we we've had quite a quite a few years in the last year with a a lot of things that have really tested this council. And I guess all I really want to say and to not take too much time is how proud I am to have served with all of you. This has been just a wonderful experience with a lot of growth. I walk away from this council as a changed person, more with a lot, hopefully a lot more maturity, a lot more, just gain experiences from having been around around this council, around staff. And so I just am so thankful for the confidence that the my community put in me to elect me to this position. And I have full confidence that whoever's appointed for the seat will continue this great work and that this council will continue to, you know, do great things for the city. We have seen some amazing changes, some amazing investments, some great things happening in Pasco as a very desirable place to live. And so I'm very proud of the work the staff, the work that Council has put together to make Pasco a better place. And so I I get to leave along with Mayor Saul, saying that we made this place a a better place. And so I want to express just my gratitude to all of you and to staff. And yes, I I will be transitioning here, so thank you so much for for that.
Anybody want to share before I like to close it, close it down? Anybody else, Councilwoman Roach?
I just wanted to say thank you for your service, Ruben, to this community. I appreciate it. I enjoyed serving with you on the Planning Commission for a year before you moved on up. And, you know, I I have the privilege of calling you my friend. And that is something that I think is not always the case. And so, yeah, thank you for always questioning and being a soundboard, sounding board. And, yeah, good guide to me as I started on council myself. And I just want to recognize Evelyn, Evy, and say, you know, thank you for your sacrifice as a spouse to, you know, give your spouse to the city. It's a big, a big sacrifice to make. And so I want to thank you and recognize you for that as well. And then moving on to Nettie as well, I think that, you know, I see myself just in my own relationship, that it takes a lot to keep up the home front and carry the weight that's left behind. And you've done that for nineteen years?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years? That's a lot. And so I appreciate you for that. And Mayor, I just want to say that it's been an honor. You appointed me to Planning Commission back in two thousand eleven from that really young photo of you. So I appreciate that opportunity to have served the city under you while you were a council member and then, yeah, to serve alongside of you. And I'm just disappointed that it had to be in a pandemic where I had to be mostly virtual and not get the opportunity to maybe glean some of the wisdom that I would have had I been serving side by side with you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Ruben, I I mean, it's been it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. The way you handle situations with grace and diplomacy, I think The way you handle situations with grace and diplomacy, um I think has helped this council gel and stay together well through very difficult times and through some very difficult situations. And you, as someone who spends probably way too much time researching the matters in front of us, um your level of expertise and deep understanding of who's affected, who's at the table, who matters, who needs to be heard right here and right now and he needs to be stood up for, um is something that I, you know, I I I've always treasured your your guidance and feedback on that and so um I hope I've learned enough to keep a little bit of momentum on the thing, on 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 some of that. And I think, I hope and I believe that that your participation and service with this council has made us all better at count being on council members and being community members, so I'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Yes, Councilwoman Mayor Protem Brahas.
Councilmember Alvarado, I appreciate you very much. Uh I consider you a friend, as well as your wife. Thank you so much for your time. Um your calm demeanor at some of our meetings has just been astounding. Um I've learned from you and I just want to say I appreciate you and um you know, it's just working along with you has been great, has been fun. I appreciate that. Thank you for allowing Ruben to uh serve his community and knowing the city of Pasco and specifically your your little community out there in Tierra Vida, um wow, everybody loves you out there. Um Nettie, thank you so much again. We, I I did speak with you on Friday, just wanted to say again, thank you so much. And Mayor, I forgot my list again, you're in luck. Thank you so much, Mayor, uh for your guidance um and um just your humor. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mel.
Uh thank you and uh thank you, Ruben, for everything you've done. Uh I can always remember you riding up on your bike and I think about all the times I went to the downtown and without you, we would had a lot of odd conversations cause you were able to speak uh with your Spanish and it uh made for a good engagement, whereas if it wasn't for you, I don't know how it would have turned out. Uh people seem to think that we were selling something, so insurance or something like that. But uh anyway, I I really appreciate everything you've done and uh it's always seemed like to me, this has always been like a family and you were the younger brother, but you were like wise in your ways, so I never thought of you as anything but an equal. And uh I just really appreciate everything you've done and again, your demeanor and uh again, it's gonna be odd coming back here in January and missing you and missing our great mayor. I spoke on Friday and I meant every word and again, that's just a pleasure and I think of how hard this was with the pandemic and the Zoom. And I remember so many times I'm like trying to chime in and it didn't work and you think, oh, well, but you still had a great meeting or when you tried to get us to speak. Uh and you worked through all the different things with the Zoom and how all the different glitches and yet you were so patient and willing to make sure that our voice was heard and that we were, felt like we were still participating and uh and then coming here by yourself. It it always seemed odd that, you know, you're a family member and we weren't here to support you, but and we were at home. But uh anyway, I I just really am gonna miss you guys, both of you and uh again, it's been a pleasure and uh you'll always be my friend. And I hope you guys will stop by and uh visit with us, whether we're at the council or just in life, so thank you, thank you both.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. You know, we've been on both of your accounts, knowing this time is short, you know, Ruben, you made your announcement, it seems like years ago, it was a couple, you know, talking with you about the your personal needs, right? And you have put the city on such a high pedestal. And it's been phenomenal to watch you and us kind of mature collectively. And your passion, it just bleeds through. I mean, we've talked about, you are Mr. Tierra Vida, you are. I appreciate the invites down there, the Christmas parties, the Halloween parties, just the parties. Um the love that you have for your community and and your wonderful wife, can't leave her out too. You are wonderful people. Walla Walla will be tremendously better with both of you there. I can say that and I've appreciated your friendship and I've appreciate appreciated both of your friendships. And I know you guys have gone through a lot over this past four years and it's been an honor to watch as we all have combated various things. And you guys have persevered and been a tremendous example of that perseverance, so I appreciate that. Mayor, I'll let you off light. So, and of course, to Nettie, I I I've said great things about one wife, can't just let her go. You've been phenomenal. I'll miss you more than him. But seriously, to both of you and to your spouses, thank you very much for everything you've given.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarado, I would like to tell you tonight that I'm I'm been honored to work with you. Uh let me, let me tell you why. When you first come on to the board uh or to the council, um the amount of growth that you have demonstrated from when you started till today, it's only been four years, right? It is phenomenal. I was, I I I was kind of, I kind of saw you as a little brother at first, uh speaking in from the council. Uh but to see the way, the way you interacted at Tierra Vida and the way you earned the respect and the love of the people there and and that community in your district was barring on uh one of the most beautiful things that that somebody like the mayor would see. And uh and I, it was just beautiful to know that I could go there and when I would arrive and seeing how you were surrounded and taking leadership and the people, the kids, and these kids that came here today, um undoubtedly appreciate you so much. And I just want to tell you, I appreciate you and what you have brought during my toughest times. And and I will tell you the whole, the whole council this, each and every one of your characters and each and every one of your strengths and weaknesses. I felt all of them as I was going through those tough times that we had come together. And that's, I I will tell you that I've done nothing but praise and and just I'm so proud of that, it was so much diversity here and the strength that we brought together as a team is what got us through those tough times. And and Pasco's been through a lot of tough times and the growth here, the exponential growth with all the things that are happening. Um it's just been phenomenal to experience and Ruben, um your leadership qualities are are just awesome. And and they 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 mixed in so well with what we have here today and it was because each and every one of you. But you right now, since uh since you've decided to leave us, um I just want to say thank you and it's been an honor to work with you and um I feel accomplished because I've seen how you accomplish you are. And so thank you so much for your service and time. And and there was another thing I can't let go. I know that this year, this this term that you've passed, uh you've lost loved ones. You've been through rough times and I think most people didn't even know it, Ruben, but I was praying for you all the time. Thank you for your service. Thank you for those tough times that, you know, we, I felt when you needed, you know, your time off and I tried to support you as much as I could. Uh but I know and I know it's been tough, but not only am I proud of you and I'm sure the council is proud of you, but your family, your mom and your wife, thank you so much for your sacrifices, so I appreciate that. Thank you. So with that, uh I will turn it over to uh City Manager Dave Zabel.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of items I wanted to to talk about and Ruben, I'd like to say a couple of things too, but I get through a couple of pieces of business first. So we do have a public visiting workshop that we talked about, December fifteenth. It's at Salon Santa Cruz, uh one seventeen South Fifth in Pasco, starts at four thirty P M, doors open up. So opportunity for folks to to get involved and uh really make an impact on the Pasco Downtown Master Plan effort. Uh I wanted to note, uh I I'm sure folks are aware of this, but our flags will be at half-staff for the next few days uh for two different reasons. One, uh the um passing of Senator uh Bob Dole. And uh flags are at half pass uh pursuant to a presidential proclamation uh until close of business Thursday, December ninth. Uh also, Governor Enzley ordered uh flags at at a half-staff as well in remembrance of National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day tomorrow, December seventh. Um and uh so I wanted folks to be aware of that and why they were. We get often get a lot of questions as to to why. Uh I do want to talk a minute on um, your seat's not even cold yet, but we do need to talk about replacing you, Ruben, I'm sorry. Uh and and reason I think it's 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 a bit of a uh something for council to think about in terms of timeliness is next month, you also have the uh reorganization of the city council. You're gonna elect your leadership for mayor and and uh Mayor Protem. And uh it it may be easier to do that with seven members than six. And so my suggestion, uh you know, uh in that we have a uh the resignation of Councilmember Alvarado is that uh we could probably get advertised and do a pretty decent job of getting word out this uh this month. Uh we're geared up to to kind of make that happen in the next day or two. And uh suggesting the council's first order of business could be those interviews and a possible selection at your January third meeting. So I wanted to get some feedback from council, if that was of interest to council or if we wanted to just see where January third goes uh with six council members.
Mr. Zabel, just real quick, um I haven't been through an appointment process of a council member, um could you talk us through what a typical one?
Oh, so typically, yeah.
Last time, what what happened?
Yeah, typically, you know, and I I can tell you what happened last time here, but what last time here was is pretty typical of what I've seen uh in my career in a number of different cities. But uh so um you know, certainly an advertisement process, uh which is subject to the council's discretion. But what we've done here is just get the word out uh through our social media, through uh newspaper, other means. Web or the city website and uh there's there's typically a kind of our application process very similar to uh what a advisory commission member uh would fill out. Uh I I think the one we had last time was why do you want to be on council rather than, you know, what? But uh essentially, it's very similar to that process and then council uh interviews uh full count, council the whole, interviews all the candidates. And I think, I believe, uh the last time we went through this process was to fill the vacancy of uh uh Councilmember Garrison, yeah, uh at his passing. And I I want to say we had six or seven candidates. Matter of fact, Councilmember Serrano was one of those candidates.
I was as well.
Oh, you were, my apologies. But uh yeah, we had six or seven candidates and um council selected that evening. And that council member, it was uh Chai, I'm sorry, I can't remember Chai's last name. Flores, Chad Flores, yeah. Uh newly appointed uh Councilmember Flores sat down during the meeting and and jumped right in. So that's that's kind of how that went. Uh I've never, honestly, I've never seen it happen the last meeting of a year or so that, you know, right before the next meeting where you're organizing. Which puts a little bit of twist on for this council is to, and and it puts you in a little bit of a, a little bit under the gun to to decide whether or not you want to try to do that election with six members or seven. And I don't mean to surprise anybody with this discussion tonight, but I I think it's kind of important we have it.
So, looking forward, that's a regular meeting.
That's a regular meeting.
Which means we have to conduct business after a month off. I know I'm not asking you to try and crystal ball this, but do you have any idea of what critical items we're going to have to discuss adequately and make a decision on during that meeting? Because if we're talking about interviewing and reorganizing and conducting business, it's going to be a very long meeting. So we ought to either consider starting early or figure out which one we can segment in or out.
I I think you, you're you're not gonna find that meeting as heavy as the last several have been. You know, I mean typically, our first couple of meetings are a little bit later.
I, yeah, as I recall, I just want to make sure, I mean, I think it's critical that we get someone seated as quickly as possible. I I think the only concern I would have is we at least plan to conduct the interviews, depending on what the numbers are. Whether we seat someone that night or not, I I can't, I can't, I mean, if forecast, if it's six or seven, I think it's more than likely doable. If we get twenty or thirty, um obviously, that that changes the landscape of things, right? Uh if we get two, then it makes it, changes that landscape. So I think without trying to forecast, I think it's important that we at least advertise and intend to select or at least advertise that we're interviewing that meeting. And then where we go with the reorganization of council from there, uh time permitting, I guess, is my take.
Uh thank you, Mayor Martinez. Um I guess, Mr. Zabel, when I'm when I'm thinking this through, this is an I'm I'm concerned about us making a rash decision in an area that is, you know, already, you know, um that we we struggle to connect with well. Um and in, and I'm sure Mr. Alvarado has thoughts and um on on perhaps how 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 to go about it or who who whether whether there's a good candidate pool that's already kind of percolating around. But um I would not want to commit to seating someone at that first meeting necessarily because I think it's really important for us to be thoughtful on it and it could be a clear choice. And in which case, I, you know, I I certainly, I think this council can decide to move quickly if we uh, if the if the situation seems very obvious to us. But I would certainly, um I I think um maybe conducting interviews makes sense, but I would hate to hold up the rest of business on an appointment that's you know, important, who we're gonna be serving with for the next two years is a really big decision. Um and so I'd I'd want to make sure we've gone through that process well and thoughtfully um and not overcommit to accelerating that too quickly. So um you know, leadership selection and such as as um it will be what it is. Um but um um it'd be, you know, of course, I wish we, I wish Mr. Alvarado was gonna be able to serve with us for another two years and this would be much easier. But um a lot of stuff coming into head at once, so um yeah, I guess I I'd be interested in seeing if we can move forward with interviews. And then I think we as a council can probably get an idea then of whether this is a clear decision for us and an easy decision for us or whether this is a, an item that requires more uh more consideration and maybe some consultation with the community at large to understand and make sure that we are serving that community that will be represented, that district well, um that again, none of us resided. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
So my um input is that I do agree with uh Councilmember Serrano's in having to initiate the uh uh process as soon as possible, just as well as I agree with Councilmember Maloney. Um it's something that does require we look into it as soon as possible. But I also uh agree that it's not something we should jump into nominating someone immediately. So um if we can get a pool of candidates and start interviewing uh as soon as we can and uh just take it from there, depending on how many um show interest. But I'm also not um, I I I'm not in the urgent need to appoint someone um without having a good pool of candidates to interview. Thank you.
We will get uh, we'll get the advertisements out as quickly as we can. And then uh so lastly, uh with councils and. Just once, oh, sorry. Yes. Uh this is probably an Eric question. Does this individual get the whole term or is it like some of the other positions where come November they then have to rerun for the remaining portion of the term?
It's the latter. Yeah, you 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 have to run at the next election that uh uh to be able to, and I don't know if this would be in this November or to serve the remainder of the term or if it would be the following November. So we we run in odd years, so uh for regular elections, but I'm not sure if a special election would be required. I'd have to verify that because it's an off year for us.
Verify it, but I'm pretty confident that they'll have to run in two years and then run again in the additional two years.
Yeah, it sounds right.
So that person, if you want, if that person wants to continue to run, they'll have to run two times in a row.
I have two years left, so.
Oh, you do have two.
They would finish out my term and then they would have to run for the four-year term.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's different though. I'm sorry, I thought you were just beginning another one, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure whether there's a special election in twenty twenty-two.
I I don't think so.
I I didn't. I didn't think so, but I know for some positions it is.
Well, it is for statewide office. You're right. No, absolutely. All right. And just so we're all clear, based on what we're hearing in terms of procedurally, it sounds like as an action item, it would be listed, the selection of the council member would be listed on the agenda as an action item. So, we'd need to notice it that way. And then if at some point during this process, the council decides that that's not something they want to proceed with, someone, we need to make a motion to table that and then to another time certain. But we need to notice it, so you could take action, but then you don't have to.
The important thing is that we get the advertisements out and give you the option. So, that's what we're hoping to get tonight. So, okay, and then council, if indulged me a minute, I know I'm supposed to address the full council, but I do want to address Councilmember Alvarado. So, Councilmember Alvarado, this is, it's a bit of history because you were part of that, part of that class, a founding member or plank owner, they call it the Navy, of council members that came in under the new election system. You're the first one to leave, but I have good things to say about you. I don't mean that to be, but, you know, you're the first one to leave. So, you're the, you're kind of the one that broke it up, right? And, but it's still, it kind of, it's an exciting thing for the city. Because in doing that, it was not an easy task for any of you up there, including former council member Watkins. But you guys did and you made it look pretty easy. From my perspective, the success of this council now, or then and now, was that each of you understood the gravity of that and in the weight, what was at stake, both politically and for the future of Pasco. And Ruben, in my opinion, you, you've exemplified how to represent a district and a city at the same time. And I could say that to about many of you up there, but I'm only talking about Ruben right now. But you always were a Pasco city council member first. And you can see that you were looking broadly over the whole city when you're thinking about policies or budget or projects or those kind of things. But a really close second, you were the district two Pasco city council representative. And it was really clear that you, you used your heart to promote the interests and the concerns of your neighborhood and your neighbors. So, to be able to balance those two things, I think, was pretty special. And I see that a lot up there among all of you. But Ruben, I think you just, you know, to echo Mayor Martinez's comments, you grew and you kind of perfected that over the last four years. Now, you know, like your predecessor, if you want to serve four years, you're going to have to run twice. You did that. So, you did it the hard way. And you also served on the, on the Planning Commission. So, thank you for your service to the city for two elections. Again, that's no easy feat to have to, to do two elections inside of a few years and your four years of service. And I wish you the best going forward. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And once again, thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. So, with that, my parting words is I will always have the best interest of the city of Pasco in my heart. And I, my prayers are with the council today, tomorrow, and the future council members to entrust in them the safety and the betterment of our community. So, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and God bless the city of Pasco. Thank you.